Good morning, everyone. Let's call to order our Board of County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, January 5th.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Present.
Commissioner Harris? Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
All right, now we have a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And your invocation?
Good morning.
Good morning. A couple of leadership thoughts. Leading is not something we do, it's who we are, it's our lifestyle. We are all leaders. However, if we are too big to serve, then we're too small to lead. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, God, we just pray protection over our county. God, we pray for clarity in leading. Lord, for everybody who is dealing with COVID and the challenges that comes with that, and we pray over them. Jesus, thank you for who you are and how kind that you are, and I pray blessing over this meeting, the first meeting of the year, that this would be a year marked with favor and blessing for Franklin County, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our consent agenda today would include minutes from our meeting on December 29th, claim vouchers in the amount of $378,225.64, and tax change orders are a negative $441.02. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Down to items of business, which would be to consider for approval, resolution authorizing the Franklin County to participate in Rural Opportunity Zone Student Loan Repayment Program for 2022. Good morning. Paul, you want to introduce this one, or talk about?
The student loan. Sorry. Pardon me. Good morning, Commissioner. This is renewal of the Rural Opportunity Zone that you participated in last year. Thank you. That's what I, yeah, I wrote that. There you go. Not enough coffee. This is the program that's designed in partnership with the state to help attract people to the county. And so if somebody moves their primary address from outside the county into the county and hopes that we get them here and there, join our workforce, then they're eligible to apply for tuition relief, student, student, not tuition relief, student debt relief. The county would pay up to 1,500 per applicant, and if the state matches that, in over a five-year period, the maximum that the applicant could receive is 15,000. We had two approved this past year that moved into the county. We had two others that applied, but they were denied for different reasons. But it's been a good program. We continue to push it out, and hopefully it can be utilized to its fullest. You've allocated 7,500, so each is max, and just ask for a renewal of that for another year.
The ones that applied last year will continue?
Yeah.
So, okay.
Yeah, they'll continue, and so we've got still some open slots.
They can get, they can get it for up to five years, but they have to, they have to have student loan debt to support that. So if their, they could, their five years could run out, or they could pay off their student loan debt, and then they wouldn't qualify anymore.
They don't just get a check, it has to go to the student loan.
Any other questions for Paul? We want to renew this for a second year. Motion would be to approve the resolution to participate in the Rural Opportunity Zone Student Loan Repayment Program for 2022.
Take a motion to approve it?
Second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yeah.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And staff reports.
Yeah, so here a few weeks ago, we had our latest discussion on the visitor's center and moving the historical society out there. We reviewed a lease, and the lease by and large looked great. I think the only question that was left was they requested that we finish the floors on the upstairs of the visitor's center. And where we left that was you asked us to get a quote on that. Brandon's done, so got the quote right here. It's for just a basic vinyl plank flooring, and Brandon can answer any technical questions you have. Total price of it is $7,381.13, and, and we believe that's going to be pretty, I would say that's probably about as cheap as we're going to get. Is that fair?
Yeah, they confirmed that was the cheapest option they had.
And so what I need, what the historical society needs is, is direction. I mean, we can send them a lease that does not have that language in it. I mean, we can say, here's our lease. We don't agree to do the upstairs, and they can, we can authorize them to do it themselves with their funding. Or, you know, we can, they're one of our community partners, we can look at their 2022 funding allocation, and we can make some adjustments there. There's any number of things that, that the commission can do, but we need direction on how you would like us to proceed.
And to recap where we are, this is kind of the last variable, or the last thing that's in flux before we finalize a contract, send it to them to either sign or not?
Yeah, absolutely.
If we approved, would we use transient guest tax to do it?
Yes.
Quite a bit more than I think we were expecting. And from what they said, the, the goal was just to have a sweepable surface, something that didn't, didn't collect dust, quite like bare wood would, so it's not going to be open to the public, it's just a story, Jerry. I would think, like a porch paint or something tough like that would be, maybe a good option instead of that much money for flooring, kind of give it the same effect at least, so.
Kind of a if and and buts about it. I mean, it's strictly going to be for storage, it's not going to be for traffic, for people, it's not going to be for an office. You can't have any offices up there because there's no, no fire. You know, we got one escape, that's why they wouldn't let us put it up there. Who gives a bid?
Crooks.
Crooks, okay. Kind of an unforeseen deal. It's something we'd never would have done for ourselves, I doubt.
And, and just for?
I'm surprised they didn't do it in the first place years ago when they built it. I mean, you know, if they was going to do it, why didn't they do it then? I'm surprised.
Just for perspective, we have agreed every single other term that they have asked for. I mean, we are going to put HVAC up there. I mean, I, I, one could argue that we've been very generous in this negotiation with them, and this space is, is going to be, I think, a fairly significant upgrade for them, and.
What are some of our ongoing costs? I mean, there's no rent, really, or a negligible amount of rent that we're collecting from the manually, but we'll have utilities?
Yeah, we'll pay for, yeah, I mean, we're, we're asking that they pay us $1,200 a year, which is obviously a nominal amount, $100 a month in rent. We're going to pay all utilities. Yeah, we'll continue to maintain the building.
Lawn care.
Lawn care, exterior maintenance. All of that will remain the county's responsibility.
And also, now, we put, we're putting air conditioning upstairs?
We are.
Which actually will increase our utilities above what they are even currently.
Yeah.
Transient tax or not, I'd say there's still tax dollars. I, I wouldn't, if it was mine, I wouldn't, wouldn't do that, so I'd probably be against it. Including that language in any contract that went forward.
Okay.
Right now, it's just what plywood?
Yeah. It is.
Yeah, I thought we was looking at something a little cheaper that, you know, just roll out some linoleum or something like that. But, I don't know, Diane's here, maybe we ought to ask her whose our thoughts are.
Yeah, I mean, she, she can, Diana, you're happy, welcome to come up and speak if you would like.
Good morning. I appreciate that the county even took the time to get the numbers. We had no idea. We were just looking for the least expensive option, just to create a floor that was cleanable. And if something were to be spilled, wouldn't end up trickling down through the ceiling. So I, it's, we respect what the county decides with this. I mean, if, if you don't put it in, we're going to have to figure out how to tap our reserves to, to put it in, because once we have shelving in there, it'll be very hard to go back in to add anything. So we just appreciate that you're even considering this at this point.
So if a deck paint kind of deal would work okay then, you think?
I, I don't know enough about painting the floor. I've put off painting my own porch, because I'm still trying to decide what's put on it. But if, if that's a reasonable solution, I am fine with that. It's just a matter of, we want a floor that we can clean, but it doesn't have to be anything fancy at all, it just needs to be cleanable.
I was just thinking, so if you, if you found a carpet place that, like, does commercial, you know, property, and, and if somebody is replacing their commercial carpeting, just say, we would like those pieces, you know, and just lay them out on the floor, that would be?
Well, we don't want carpet.
Oh, you don't want carpet?
No, carpet actually harbors critters and, and, yeah, so that's actually can put our collection at risk. So a hard floor would be the ideal thing. But what that hard floor is, is really inconsequential, as long as it's something that it's cleanable.
Answered my question. So I, I think a porch paint or deck paint, seal up the seams and go with something like that, would look like that would be adequate.
Brandon, is that something that you and your staff can do, paint the floors up there?
Probably could. The only question mark I have is what prep we need to do to get ready for that thing, so, but I can certainly look into that.
Might have to sand it down or something like that, put it down, or if people don't trip on the seams or something like that.
Yeah. Well, I'm just trying to figure out, I know we're all anxious to move this forward, I know you have a meeting bef, next Tuesday, right?
Correct. If, if we need to hold off making a decision on our end until February, we can, but.
Yeah, well, I just, I don't know if, if it's the board's desire, I can just modify the language in the lease to state that we'll, we'll put some kind of paint on the floor and, and handle it that way. That's, I just need clear direction from the four of you.
Well, I'm leaning that way, just changing to say that we'll, we'll paint it appropriately.
Okay. Diane, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I think that's great, except for I'm still wondering if that's putting too much on our maintenance people, because they're already stretched.
Well, and, and we can, regardless, I don't think that'll be a significant cost, so Brandon and I can discuss that.
It's not the cost at the time.
Yeah, well, I, right, but if we had to contract that out, I don't think that's.
Guess you gotta know what the cost of that is too, so, I mean, you know, just because we're thinking it's a cheaper way to go, it may not be a cheaper way to go, because waterproof paint is pretty expensive too. So I guess it's hard, I just want to do the most economical and serve both of us a bit.
So would you like us to get a cost and bring it back?
Yeah.
To the four of you?
Yeah.
Well, since, I mean, this is a relatively small thing in the whole scheme of what's going on. I don't see, I don't hear any interest going forward with the $7,000 option, so we could take that out. And, I mean, I think there's been throughout this com, you know, whole deal, a lot of interest on the board to help and do what's right, you know, help the historical society get going in this new facility. So we could take that surface thing later as a whole separate option, once we get a cost and think of, you know, I mean, well, it wouldn't be a promise or anything in the contract, no, but I mean, I think we've shown.
Would you be comfortable with that, Diana, if we just?
Yeah, I would, and that would give our board the opportunity to vote on
Okay.
a lease, and then we can decide as a separate.
And imagine it would all hinge on whether or not the floors were painted, so.
Well, and this is so thoroughly within my spending allowance that, you know, when it comes to transient guest tax dollars, I try to put even the smallest decisions in front of you, but this isn't something that is going to be, I mean, our budget's almost $30 million. This isn't something that's going to be, you know. So I think if, yeah, if we'll just remove that language, advance it to you with the understanding that we'll figure something out for the flooring, and you and I can have that discussion.
Okay, that, that sounds very reasonable. Thank you.
Sounds like we found a way forward. All righty.
Okay, thanks, Diana. Next thing, and I'll use this as a segue to Brenda's update. We are currently having another COVID spike, numbers starting to get very, very high. Literally, you know, look out my window all day long, and, and I don't know if the numbers bear this out, but anecdotally, it sure appears like we're doing more testing than we've ever done. Line of cars pretty much all day long earlier this week. Had a Zoom call with my leadership team yesterday. Internally, we are basically going back to Zoom-only meetings. I did not state that as an expectation, but I strongly encouraged my staff, unless it is absolutely necessary to meet in person, let's start meeting via Zoom again, because we're, we're seeing it, like it is having a palpable effect on our own organization. We've got folks all throughout our leadership ranks that are suffering from, from COVID. And so I, I think, in talking to our COVID team, I don't think we're prepared to recommend at this point that, that these meetings go back to Zoom only, but I do think we ought to consider, do we want to spread out again like we were before? Bring the tables back, spread the five of you out, and that would be consistent with what we're trying to do. If we have to meet in person internally, I've asked that we either meet in this room, or the EOC, or one of our bigger conference rooms, so that we can maintain that six feet of social distancing. I think that's what we would recommend that we do in these meetings. But certainly, Brenda, if you want to come up and talk about that, and then we'll get the board's thoughts.
So if we don't go back to Zoom and one of us gets COVID, we're really down on numbers, then we just, you just have a meeting with who you have? Because the other one, or will that one?
If we don't have a quorum, then we couldn't, there'd be no reason to have a meeting, we couldn't accomplish business, but.
Eric, you're exactly right. I want to start with bragging about the Health Department crew. They have done an outstanding job of pulling together, keeping a wonderful positive attitude, and working really, really hard. I, last week, we saw 290 for testing, and as I give you these numbers, remember that's our Health Department, it's not Ottawa Family Physicians, so they are equally as busy too, they're very busy as well. And so far, in two days, we're at 166, so 88 on Monday and 78 yesterday. And we've made a plan internally that we could even do up to over 100 of tests a day. Again, just really want to brag about the whole crew, from the internal out, everybody, you know, picking up the phone, taking the calls. So we are at, last week, 281 active cases, and Maya does do our numbers. Again, want to brag about her, because she does a great job, and she just confirmed with me that that is the highest case count that we've had since she started one year ago. So again, numbers are creeping up. So I think anything we can do to help stop the spread, I think is great. So the other thing I just, may I move on with the other information? We are still offering the booster, and on January 11th, we already have 88 people signed up. We will spread them out, and all, you know, it's a long, several hours long. So again, very proud of the team for coming together, and we're going to keep offering that weekly. We did do another five to 11 clinic on the 28th and had another 17 kids come through. So we just keep trying to offer the vaccine when we can. And then the other thing is that we, Dr. Ransom, the COVID team came together. CDC did release some new guidelines, so we implemented some general guidelines for our community. We're working with the schools. Again, the whole COVID team is coming together and working with everyone, nursing homes. But we're still waiting for more guidance from CDC on nursing homes. But again, of course, Dr. Ransom and the COVID team were making these decisions together. Any questions or anything I left out that you'd like to add?
I don't believe so. I would take the opportunity to brag on you a little bit, Brenda. She's someone that came in right in the middle of a pandemic, and has done a fantastic job. I think morale over in the Health Department is higher than it's been since the start of the pandemic, and that's saying something, because I know everyone over there is tired of dealing with this. And so many departments across the county, and, and this is not an indictment on those departments, it's a reflection of where we're at in this world, frankly, but we're having staffing issues. But in the Health Department, we're really not. I mean, people want to come work for Brenda, and that's just a testament to the leader that she is, and, and certainly her reputation in this community precedes her. So I'm thrilled that we were able to, to hire her. Kind of segueing away from that a little bit, given this spike, we are behind in disease investigations. It's just so hard to keep up with all of that. Because of that, we're once again looking at potentially bringing on staffing. Now, I'm telling you this because we've had a lot of discussions about stimulus funds. You know, I go back to the CARES Act, we were fortunately in a spot, we used CARES Act money to do a lot of projects that, I mean, they were certainly related to COVID, but not directly. I think about all the Dustin's IT projects, and, and now with these ARPA funds, we've had a lot of discussions about so many different uses, broadband internet, rural water districts, stormwater stuff. Just want to caution all of you, we're two years into this, and our numbers are about to peak and be higher than they've ever been. Like, it's eerie, like we were on the phone with all of the superintendents yesterday. The stuff we were doing two years ago, we are still doing. I am going to lobby hard that we hold a significant portion of those funds for literal COVID response, because we didn't think we'd be here two years ago, and, you know, I think we all hope we're not here in two more years, but I don't know that there's anything suggesting that we won't. And so just want to put that out there, that, that there is going to have to be a, a big portion of that, because that's the pot of money that we're going to use to, to pay for staffing to help us respond to this. Because we, you know, we're already working hard over there, and I don't know that we can ask our folks to do too much more, so we're going to have to bring in.
They hit the ground running, and the phones are just ringing, ringing, and that's great. But everybody, I have a brand-new employee that just started Monday, and she said to me last night, wow, everybody picks up the phone instead of says, that's not my job. I, again, can't br, each, every person has done an outstanding job. So, yeah, great crew, and I'm blessed to be here, so thank you for that opportunity.
People, people still need to get an appointment to come in and get tested?
Yes, we do prefer that, and I did work the trailer a lot, you know, with all the numbers up. We do have a lot of drive-ups, and you know what, we do our best to, can you just park right over there? And I'll come out and get all your information. We don't encourage that. We encourage call for an appointment, because we don't want you to wait in that line. We want to tell you the best opportunity. We take three people every 10 minutes, but if everybody comes at once, poor Derek's window is, you know, anyway. Plus, people are frustrated in the parking lot, and so yes, please call 785-229-3530 to make an appointment, and just so that way it's a win-win situation for everybody. So thank you for that question.
I, I did have a question about the contact tracing, and you kind of alluded to that, that we're having. And so what happens when the rapid tests become available and people are testing at home? And, oh, I tested positive. How do, how do we find that out? How do we know? How do we? Or is there even anything in place for that?
They're discussing it right now, and with the meeting that I had last Thursday that I kind of was listening to and trying to make some phone calls, you know, if it's a BioNex antigen test, and again, they have all the symptoms, anyway, they're starting to consider that that may be a positive, but we have not run that, we have not got more literature and research behind that, and I have not run that by Dr. Ransom and the COVID team. So at this point, we're still encouraging that if you need it for work or school or whatever, to follow up a PCR test. However, if you have all the symptoms and you feel poorly, whether it's COVID, or whether it's influenza A or B, or maybe it's some other things, when you're sick, please stay home, is what we try to, we do need to do more education on that. That, you know, maybe, it may not be COVID, but if we're sick, you have a fever, you're not feeling well, please stay home. So, does that help answer the question? So yes, it's being discussed, just because there's so much testing that needs to be done.
Well, and obviously, our numbers could be even higher.
Oh, absolutely, and, and you're exactly right. All those home tests that, when they are just staying at home, those tests are getting much more accurate, though, much, much more accurate, and they're developing more as we speak, so.
Yeah, and I, I would add to that, Diane.
Good point.
There's, we have no idea how many people are buying rapids and testing and never letting us know. And so, yeah, I, I think it's, it's a certainty that our, our actual positive numbers are higher than what we are reporting, because, yeah, I mean, there's so many more testing options now that wouldn't require someone to report to the Health Department.
Absolutely, and they're accurate, they're getting much more accurate, so, thank you.
A person does a home rapid test, and tests negative, and they want to get it some sort of certification to take a trip or something, how, how does a person do that?
Again, we can come call the Health Department, we'll be happy to re, you know, test again.
Just test again?
Yeah, and again, the home test often doesn't meet the guidelines for travel. However, every company, cruise ship, everything is different, so we strongly encourage them to check with them. But a lot of them require a PCR test, to my knowledge.
Okay.
Right? We have some people traveling, so that's what I, yeah, so we do have the PCR. Recently, they have changed funding for, like, the pharmacies, and they are not able to offer a PCR test right now, so that makes us a little bit busier as well. However, that may change again in an hour, and we hope it does. So, we hope it does, so, thank you. Does that help answer the question?
No.
Anything else for Brenda? All right.
Thank you, Brenda.
Thanks, Brenda.
You appreciate it.
Anything else, Derek?
I don't believe so, Cole, thank you.
Paul, anything? Brandon? Sheriff?
Good morning. Just wanted to update you guys on what we're doing with our functions and services because of the spike. We're, on our operations, law enforcement operations side, we're trying to keep everything pretty much the same. We've just reenjoyed that we're, you know, there's a higher likelihood of coming across a, a positive case when you're, when they're out, so to reinsure those precautions are being taken. As far as in our jail environment, we do have a lot of programming that we do for the inmates. Most of those are being put on pause for now, the ones, because we have people that come from the outside to come in. Not all of those are going to go away. We learned through this that there are a few things that the inmates still need, that we're going to have to keep those programs going for their, their mental health and, and for the, for how well things operate in the jail, they need to continue, but for the most part, those programings are going to be put on pause for now. And then we'll just evaluate and adjust as we need to. So I'll answer any questions you guys.
Appreciate the update. Thank you. All right. Public works. Go ahead, David.
All right, so had our first real winter storm last weekend. Our crews, last Thursday, they went out and pre-treated all of our hills, curves and bridges out in the county and then Saturday around 11, we started a shift where they went out and spread material across all of our blacktop roads. And so they worked from about 11 till, oh, I forget what time it was, well into the evening whenever they finished that shift and then they were back out on Monday taking care of that as well. And today, we're, we're gearing up for the next storm that's supposed to come in tonight. Earlier this week, we replenished our, our sand pile that, that we used to mix with the salt, so we're ready to go on that. Let's see, on the, on our new municipal demolition assistance program, I've been in contact with the city of Ottawa and I'm also on the agenda, excuse me, on January 12th with the city of Welsville and then February 8th with the city of Richmond and then I've got calls into a couple of other communities. A number of the communities in the county, their commission meetings on the first Monday ever every month, so it's going to take, take a while to kind of work through that, but the initial reaction has been positive and I'll get in front of those folks and further explain it, so. Oh, and then we did get some good news on the Old 50 project. The consultant and I spoke with them yesterday. The pavement underneath Old 50, underneath the asphalt, we were worried about that, they did some geotech along there, they only found one section that is, is an issue and that's west of Pomona, or Homewood, I'm sorry. The rest of it looks really good, which is a huge, huge benefit for this project. It'll make our construction costs much, much cheaper being able to utilize that material. And then the last thing, last Thursday, I spoke to the Optimist Club to give them a update on kind of things going on around the county. So that's all I've got.
Questions for David? Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Diane, anything? Commissioners, Don?
Just went around, told me the other night, Janet swore in the new mayor and board members, they do have one spot open, they're going through the process, they do have a volunteer, but they're going through the process of advertising and everything. And to fill that, one of their biggest things was, I guess they're doing some several things, they're trying to upgrade their city park, just went downhill over the last few years and I think the board that's there now is wanting to upgrade their park back up, trying to get it back to going. They did away with rental days last year because of COVID. They're thinking about it this year, but I guess COVID will dictate whether they move forward or not, so. And that's about it.
All right. Diane?
Several of us attended the retirement celebration for Alan Radcliffe, somebody who has, has truly been an emergency responder since he was 17 and will continue to be an emergency responder even after retirement, somebody that was probably the exact right person to be our first paid emergency management person. The Connect Pan, or the Food Policy Council had a meeting on Monday. A lot of it was about the Connect Pantry, which is the one that goes out every couple of weeks out into the communities to provide meal, not provide meals, but to provide food to make meals to some of our outlying communities. And, and they're kind of at the point where they need to figure out how to get, maybe connect with harvesters to get some food provided because they're kind of out of money. And so again, it's just ongoing to help people. And then Princeton had their meeting on Monday, they got their, their final report from the engineer about their roads and the ditching in, in town and, and Paul's going to help them with, go, kind of go through that and, and help them figure out what their options are. They're hoping that they get some stimulus money from the infrastructure bill to help pay for that because that's going to be a, a pretty overwhelming for a small town, I think, for what they're going to be looking at. They had one of their longtime council members that is, is no longer going to be a council member, so they had a celebration for him. And then I think the last thing I wanted to talk about was this afternoon, they're going to do the voting for the KAC as far as whether we want to make the HR directors a voting member of KAC and I guess before I vote, what do you guys think? Should you all, all in favor of that to go ahead and?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I was kind of thinking too, but I thought before I did it, so, all right, that's good. That'll be it then, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
I think I'd have to go to Alan Radcliffe's retirement deal, it was a nice ceremony. That's it.
Well, that brings us to the end of our meeting. I'd need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Who cares, second it.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor? Any opposed, we're adjourned.